We are live Kevin.
Let's, we are live.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, so good afternoon. Welcome to the Henry County Board of Commissioners. Uh, six thirty P M Tuesday, January twenty first, twenty twenty five meeting. Due to the state of emergency. Uh, and winter weather, this meeting has been changed to a virtual meeting. Uh, to watch, uh, Henry TV will be streaming live. And um, all uh, public hearings have been withdrawn or postponed. Uh, we will begin our meeting with our invocation and we will ask our uh, very own Commissioner. Uh, Michael Price uh, to do the invocation for us tonight.
Okay, let us pray. Turn God, we thank you for this day and we thank you for all that you've done for us uh, in protecting us and keeping us from all harm and danger. Uh, even in the midst of this weather that we're having now, we ask that you would just keep those who are on the road safe. As we prepare now for this meeting, I pray that you would lead and guide us in the way that you would have us to go. Allow us to be able to conduct uh, this meeting in a way that will be beneficial to the citizens and the residents of our county. Again, we thank you for who you are and we thank you again for whose we are. And we again just honor you for this day and for this time. It is in Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Madam Chair, you're muted.
I'm sorry. Yes, let's let the people in the waiting room in. Um. And so I like to uh, call the meeting to order. And I, and I like to ask everyone to please mute. If you are not speaking, please mute. Um. So the following planning and zoning items originally advertised for January twenty first, twenty twenty five. Um, B O C meeting have been withdrawn or postponed by the applicant. Uh, so therefore we will not be hearing any other items uh, that were uh, originally listed. Uh, those items will be rescheduled for a later date. Uh, we have um, a couple of ad walk-ons in that executive session. Uh, to deal with personnel and potential litigation. Uh, the city of Stockbridge is T A D. And the appointment of the uh, county attorney. Presentations. Um, those presentations will be postponed. Uh, the Georgia Recreation and Park Association State Award Volunteer of the Year. That item will be uh, moved to the next agenda. Appointments. Um, there is an appointment for District Two. Uh, Recreation Board. Andre Bird. And I would like to ask for a motion uh, to approve this appointment. The term uh, will expire on twelve thirty one of twenty eight.
Madam Chair, I move to uh, make that appointment for Mr. Andre Bird, please.
Okay, so I got a motion from Commissioner Robinson, our Vice Chair.
Second.
Can I, okay, I got a second from Commissioner Price. Uh, and for those that are all in favor, if everybody would just kind of raise your hand. Stephanie, can you see? Okay. Um, the vote uh, carries uh unanimously. Thank you.
Madam Chair, are you able to see Commissioner Kevin Lewis? I don't see him on the screen. Do we still have him?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. If not, I was gonna ask one of the other members on to turn their camera off so that we can get him back on the screen.
Okay.
I don't know if he for Hex team can just, if they can all turn their cameras off for now. And then.
Okay.
That will get us back where Commissioner Lewis is on that front screen for the viewing public. So they'll see that he is present for the meeting. I still give me one second if I can see him. Still don't see him. Am I the only one that can't see Commissioner Lewis?
No, Mayor Ford would need to turn his camera off.
Okay, Mayor Ford, can you turn your camera off for us, please?
Just for, until you all get ready to present.
And a Mr. Gary Mungon, Mungion, I'm sorry if I mispronounced it. Can you turn your camera off for me, please? And I still don't see.
I think he has his video turned off.
Okay, I still don't see him. I just want to make sure we didn't lose him as we proceed. But if you all see that he's on, that's good. I just. Want to make.
So I, I, I see Kevin Johnson twice.
Yeah, I don't see Commissioner Kevin Lewis. I don't think he's on. Well, I see his, well, his name is on. But I don't see him.
I think his video is just off. Let me call him on the other line.
Okay, Chair, you can proceed. I just wanted to make sure before we.
Okay. Okay, all right.
Stephanie, don't forget to mute.
Okay, so uh, we move to the uh, consent agenda. And um, it is one item on the consent agenda. Uh, that talks about the Henry County Comprehensive Strategic Plan. Um, I am asking for that uh, uh, item to be moved to the regular agenda. And then um, County Manager, I guess you can proceed with um, the reading of the uh, consent agenda. Unless, and, and, and what I'd like to ask the commissioners to do is, is either raise your hand. In the. Um. Uh, the little hand that's up above or either raise your hand physically. If you want to speak. Or if you have any uh, questions. Uh, so then that way I can recognize you. Um, so uh, Sherri, do you want to begin with the consent agenda?
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the community that are viewing virtually with us this evening. This is your consent agenda for Tuesday, January twenty first, twenty twenty five. Under the County Manager, we have a resolution awarding R F P number twenty five dash twenty six to the Record Services Annual Contract. Under the annexations, we have three de-annexations. The first one is D E A X twenty four oh five, does not require a public hearing. Henry County has received a request for de-annexation from the city of Stockbridge to unincorporated Henry County for a total of eight, of eight properties. Located at six one zero, six two zero, six three five, six four zero, six four five, six five zero. And six five five Edge Comb, consisting of a combined nine point zero five three plus or minus acres. In land lot eight of the twelfth district located in District Two. We have another de-annexation that does not require a public hearing. Henry County has received a request for de-annexation from the city of Stockbridge to unincorporated Henry County for a total of two properties. Located at one ten and one twenty Jasper Drive, consisting of a combined two point two zero seven. Plus or minus acres in land lots eight and twenty five of the twelfth district located in District Two. We have a de-annexation, again, not requiring a public hearing. Henry County has received a request for de-annexation from the city of Stockbridge to unincorporated Henry County. For a total of three properties located at one seventy and one seventy five Jasper Drive. And three fifteen Curative Drive, consisting of a combined three point four four seven. Plus or minus acres in land lots eight, nine, and twenty five of the twelfth district located in District Two. And then we have a de-annexation, again, not requiring a public hearing. Henry County has received a request for de-annexation from the city of Stockbridge to unincorporated Henry County for a total of three properties. Located at twenty and twenty one Devon Court and two hundred Whiteside Bay Drive. Consisting of a combined four point four nine nine plus or minus acres located in land lot nine of the twelfth district, District Two. Under E nine one one, we have a resolution approving an annual reoccurring broadband data purchase. Through loud communications from L T E Systems on public safety radios at a cost of one hundred and nine thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars from E not. And will be paid for from the E nine one one fund repairs and maintenance accounts. Under planning and zoning, we have a resolution approving a request for a new streetlight district. For Kendall Grove Phase One Subdivision on Willow Lane located in District Four. We also have a resolution approving a request for a new streetlight district for Grand View Phases One and Two Subdivision on Millers Mill Road located in District Four. Under the Police Department, we have a resolution rescinding Resolution Number twenty four dash three hundred. List of roadways for use of speed detection devices and approving the amended list of roadways for use of speed detection devices. Attached to your exhibits as Exhibit C, List Number zero one two five dash one five one. We have a resolution approving the acceptance of the Henry County Board of Education's one-time supplement to Henry County School Resource Officers. Under Technology Services, we have a resolution to approve the purchase and maintenance of a new backup solution equipment. From Sherlock in the amount of a hundred and ninety nine thousand, nine hundred and sixty four dollars. With funding available in the repairs and maintenance budget of the Technology Services Department. Madam Chair, this ends the consent agenda.
Sorry, uh, are there any uh, questions from the board? Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Got a motion from Commissioner Anglin. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, got a second. All in favor? Opposed. Motion carries unanimously. You got that, Stephanie? Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. We're gonna go to the regular agenda. We moved the item. Uh, from the consent agenda regarding the Comprehensive Strategic Plan. And uh, we will start with that item on the agenda. Who, who's presenting that?
It's gonna be a tag team between me and Susan Harris.
Okay.
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, Board of Commissioners, pillars of the community. Tonight you have before you a resolution of the Board of Commissioners to award R F P twenty five thirty two. For the Henry County Comprehensive Strategic Plan. R F P twenty five thirty two was solicited by the Purchasing Department. One proposal was received and Evaluation Committee was formed. The proposal was reviewed and scored. Staff recommends award of R F P twenty five thirty two to K L Scott and Associates LLC of Atlanta, Georgia. In the amount of three hundred ninety five thousand, seven hundred and seventy two dollars. Whereas funding has been identified within existing unallocated professional services accounts shared by multiple departments.
Board, I'd like to add how critical this is for the future of Henry County. Uh, we, we speak often about what our vision is, what our goals are as a county, and this is gonna be an opportunity for us to lay a roadmap for the next twenty five to thirty years. Uh, it's gonna give clear objectives as to what our priorities are. It's gonna decide how we allocate our budget. And what it looks like in the future as we develop and grow this county. Uh, we're excited about it. We, we want to move forward with this and we think it's gonna have a huge impact for Henry County employees and residents. I will add also that this is gonna be heavily involving our citizens. There's gonna be multiple meeting surveys. They're gonna be out in the field. Uh, finding out input from citizens of Henry County and what they want to see in the future as well. So we're getting information from stakeholders, citizens, and the vision from all of you on this board. So we're excited to move forward if approved.
Okay, thank you. Um, so what I'd like to do is just um, go down the row. Uh, Commissioner um, Wilson. Uh, do you have, I'm, I'm gonna just go with each Commissioner. Commissioner Wilson, do you have any questions or comments, sir?
I do. Uh, Kevin, when you talked about input from the citizens, we will have town halls in each district like we did when, but did the Park Master Plan, that type thing. Is that the way it's gonna work?
Yes, sir, that's correct. Uh, team is gonna come in, partner with our staff, and uh, make sure we touch every district and in multiple aspects. Uh, in person, online, uh, any way we can. We want to make sure we get, get that input.
Okay, that's all ahead.
Okay, uh, next Commissioner, uh, Vice Chair, uh, Robinson.
That was the question, just making sure that if we were gonna have it, you know, for the constituents to have input on it. So thank you for that.
Yes, and again, Board, this is, this is driven by you all. So if you have a specific location, if you have a specific vulnerable population or somebody that you want to make sure we get with, uh, we could definitely set that up.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Anglin.
Yeah, Kevin, you had answered this question for me, but I think it's important for the board and everybody to know. What is the plans? Plans are always great, but updates, because changes take place, are to me strategic and important. What does that process look like in the updating and changes? Did I just freeze, Kevin?
Yep, you did. You just froze it.
Okay, kids, we got a backup.
Sorry, guys. Uh, I don't know why. Internet just froze up on me there. Um, you were asking about implementation of the plan and updates. So uh, I don't know how many of you know this. My background's in emergency management. We live off of plans, so the, the updating process never stops. It's constantly looked at. We're constantly working on it, and that's why this group is special. Uh, this is a fifteen to twenty year commitment, not only by county staff and this board, but by this, uh, by this group that's gonna help us write this plan. So every meeting, we're gonna have every item aligned with this plan coming to you. So the plan shifts as we develop and grows. But it stays true to that core vision that is established in the base process. So we're gonna have an annual approval of this. So you're gonna see every year what's been accomplished based off the plans and objectives, how if we're getting there, what moves we've made throughout that year. And how we move forward the next year, and if we need to make any changes, we can.
Okay, uh, that's, that's uh, Commissioner uh, Price. Any questions?
Yes, well, my question was answered previously as well. Um, I was just concerned about um, the number of um, bids or quotes that we did have. And uh, based upon the answer I received, that um, we are expecting um, some extensive information and work and commitment. Um, and based upon them not, uh, having one, we do have this particular um, organization or company that has committed themselves. Uh, to working diligently to give us the things that we need, again, to make our, our county uh, a good county. Uh, and to drive us in that direction that we need. So I'm just grateful for the commitment uh, that we did find this company that say I'm with you all for the long haul. So thank you for answering that question prior.
Okay, thank you. And um, Commissioner Lewis.
Yeah, good evening, everyone. Uh, my question, so that spurs another question. When you say that this company is in. With us for the long haul, so the amount of money that we are approving. Um, is this a one-time fee? Are they gonna come back every year with a retainer fee? To stay with us for the long haul? So, so I, I need to understand the financing of it.
No, sir, it's, it's a one-time fee uh, for the core development of the plan and the addition work that comes later on. So the maintenance, the upkeep, the changes. They're gonna be engaged with us uh, for the remainder. We're looking at a plan with a lifespan till twenty forty five, and that's, that's what's locked in.
Okay, and the, and the initial money is coming from where?
It's gonna be allocations from our professional services budget. Susan, correct me if I'm mistaken here, but uh, we've worked with all thirty two departments. We pulled our uh, professional services budget uh, to fund this project.
Okay. And that's, this is gonna come out of this year's budget or it's gonna be on next year's budget?
This year's budget, sir.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, if there are no other questions from the board, uh, can I get a motion to approve? Okay, got a motion from Commissioner Anglin. Can I get a second? Got a come up, uh, second from Vice Chair Robinson. Um, and uh, if there are no further questions, all in favor. Opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Stephanie, you have that? Okay.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Next item on the agenda is um, the County Attorney, uh, a home rule ordinance uh, by Henry County, um. Attorney Noel.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board. Um, this is a second adoption of a home rule ordinance amendment. Um, to amend section two dash two dash one fifteen of the County Code of Ordinances. Uh, related to the Henry County Development Authority. The purpose of the amendment is to provide that appointments to the board serve at the pleasure of the appointing either Chair or Commissioner. Um, and if there's a change in the Chair or Commissioner during the term. Of the authority board members' um, service. Then the current Chair or Commissioner has the opportunity to appoint a new member of the board.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions from the board? Can I get a motion uh, to approve uh, for the second read? Got a motion from Commissioner. Got a, um, a motion from Commissioner Lewis, the second from Commissioner Anglin. Uh, if there are no questions, all in favor. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Human Resource and Risk Management. Uh, for, this is regarding the A C C G Irma First Responder for PTSD Program.
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the board. This is Holly LaFontaine with Human Resources and Risk Management. Here to present a resolution to participate in A C C G Irma's First Responder PTSD Program as required by state law. This outlined in House Bill four fifty one. The Georgia First Responder PTSD Program, um, the purpose of House Bill four fifty one is also known as the Ashley Wilson Act. It requires all public entities in Georgia to offer a supplemental benefit program for first responders diagnosed with PTSD. Resulting from exposure to line-of-duty traumatic events. It creates a once-per-lifetime financial safety net to assist with uninsured costs associated with PTSD treatment and recovery. First responder may access the benefits quickly and confidentially without worry over stigma or job loss. The Act does not impact employer health plans, which are required to provide coverage for PTSD and other mental health conditions. Eligible first responders. Um, outlined in this House bill are communication officers, emergency medical professionals, firefighters. Jail officers, peace officers, correctional officers, emergency medical technicians. Hero drivers, juvenile correction officers, and probation officers. The Human Resources Risk Management budget is gonna absorb the cost of this unfunded mandate, but we will have to ask in next budget year for probably funding to cover. Um, the additional cost to our budget. Is there any questions?
Okay, are there any questions uh, from the board? If you would raise your hand, if we have any questions from the board. Okay, seeing none. Um. Can I get a motion to approve? Got a motion from Commissioner Anglin.
Second.
Got a second from Commissioner Lewis. All in favor? Oppose. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Splosh and um. Is Lynn on line to make this presentation?
Yes, ma'am.
You can go, Lynn. I think she's ready for you.
All right, um, I was gonna have the, it's a pretty, yeah, there we go. So uh, before you is a resolution approving the purchase of uh, shade structures. At the aquatic uh, outdoor uh, water park. In the amount of four hundred ninety three thousand, four hundred nine dollars and twenty three cents using Splosh five funds. The uh, Splosh five was approved by voters uh, in November of twenty nineteen. The Aquatic Center was uh, is an approved uh, project. The uh, construction was awarded on December fifth of twenty twenty three. And Playworks has provided a proposal. In the amount of four hundred ninety three thousand, four oh nine point two three. This includes nine entrance shade structures and eighteen poolside shade structures. And the scope of work includes survey, delivery, and installation of all listed structures. And um, is Jamie, are you showing uh, the pictures for everyone to see? Okay, so um, this shows, uh, this illustration shows. Um, all of the shade structures that go around the perimeter, as well as the shade structures that cover the entrance area. That will uh, protect people standing out in uh, the sun. Uh, I've got a breakdown of other, Jamie, if you could advance the slide, please. Uh, this, it shows the uh, coverage um, class at the entrance. And then um, the next slide will show um, a large uh, structure that will be going uh, be, be available for rent. All of these structures that you see that are around the pool will be available for rent. Um, if you can keep going through the pictures, Jamie, please. Thank you. And then that final uh, sail shade structure is gonna provide shade by our food truck area. For people who uh, will be um, uh, eating in that area, they can have shade. Um, I do want to point out on this next slide, uh, this is an example of the revenue that the Spivey Splash. Uh, facility has uh, seen from their rental categories for uh, fiscal year, their year twenty three and twenty four. Uh, the next slide does show um, the proposed uh, quote for all of the shade structures. And then finally, um, I wanted to um, just iterate. That, you know, the entrance shade structures will provide uh, shelter from the summer heat for patrons. The shade structures around the perimeter are available for rent. It will be a continuous source of revenue throughout the season. And we're requesting uh, authorization to use boss five funds to purchase. These shade structures utilize, utilizing the Sourcewell contract. And funds of, as I said, are available in the Aquatic Center project account. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Okay, great. Um, if any commissioners have any questions, please raise your hand. Commissioner Wilson, did you raise your hand?
I did.
Okay, go ahead.
So when was the design, was this shade structure, were they left out of design, the original design for the Aquatic Center?
So we had. So we had um, a couple pavilions. But after uh, seeing the revenue potential. We uh, decided based, you know, we in consultation with our aquatic consultant. And also speaking with um, Spivey Splash that um, it would benefit us to have uh, as, as many shade structures that we, as we can. You know, reasonably fit around the uh, water park for the purpose of renting for revenue. It will be uh, you know, continuous revenue for years to come. So there, there will be a return on the invest, there is an investment, but there's gonna be definitely a return on investment.
And Lynn, if, if I may, I, I recall.
And Lynn, if if I may, I I recall when we were going over this agenda item, you indicating there being some safety concerns um, after speaking with other aquatic centers. So can you speak to that as well? Even beyond the revenue, obviously, that's great, but the safety aspect of it as well.
Absolutely, and it, the safety aspect uh, relates specifically to the entrance shade structures that we showed. Um, you know, we expect this uh, water park to be extremely popular. And even though we do have uh, plans in place to expedite the line, everyone will be going through a security check. So they will be waiting in line a little bit and waiting in direct sun in the heat of the summer. Um, could result in, in, in some, you know, people passing out. And it's just a, it's a little bit, it's, it's a bit of a liability. And and Spivey Splash ended up having to add their shade structures after the fact. And it definitely looks like it was added after the fact where uh, this is, is planned into uh, into the entire park. It's well planned. It's going to look beautiful. And um, and yes, it's, it's definitely going to be uh, reduce any liabilities for uh, anybody um, you know, getting affected by the heat.
And and Lynn, just to confirm, these are budgeted through SLOSS, correct?
Yes, funding is available in the Aquatic Center SLOSS the project account.
Okay, is, was that your only question, Commissioner uh, Wilson?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Lewis?
No, Lynn, Lynn answered my question. I just wanted to know the um, return on the investment and uh, Commissioner Wilson asked the other piece of my question if it was part of the original plan, but Lynn answered everything. So thank you.
Okay, any other commissioners have uh, any questions with regards to this item? Okay, uh, then can I get a motion to approve?
Um, move to approve.
Okay, got a motion from Commissioner Lewis, second by Commissioner Anglin. Uh, all in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed? Uh, Commissioner Wilson is opposed. Uh, motion carries.
Thank you.
Um, the planning is on items have been removed. Our county manager, did you have any uh, comments?
We are going to do a weather um, update, Madam Chair. I don't know if you want to do that now, or if you want to do it at the conclusion of the meeting.
We can do it at the conclusion of the meeting.
Okay.
Um, I know that um, our next upcoming meetings uh, will be February the fourth at nine AM and February the twenty-fifth at six thirty uh, PM. I think now uh, what I would like to do is ask uh, for a motion uh, to move into executive session.
Um, Chair, I just wanted to make sure, are we doing the City of Stockbridge TAD?
Oh, okay, okay. I forgot about this. Okay, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I didn't want to interrupt.
The county manager.
Okay, I'm sorry. I uh,
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I, I totally forgot. Um, yeah, okay, okay, so uh, uh, roll back. Uh, the City of Stockbridge uh, is here to present uh, the TAD uh, to us. It's so uh, is uh, Mayor Ford and uh, the uh, city manager, uh, Fred Gardner on um, line with us.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right, if you could uh, go ahead.
All righty, uh, real quick, Mayor, we're, we're gonna do, uh, um, Chair, Chairman, we're gonna do a real quick um, group tag team. Um, so with us tonight, we have Mayor Ford um, as well as our new incoming, uh, new uh, Economic Development Director, as well as our consultant, Gary Mangian, with KB Advisory Group, uh, who will give the presentation and then we'll be available to answer questions thereafter. Uh, so right now, I'm going to turn it over to Mayor Ford to do a kind of introduction as to our downtown vision and what this tool means to us. Uh, Mayor Ford?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Gardner. Appreciate it. Madam Chair, Commissioners, and especially congratulations to Madam Vice Chair, Neve Robinson. Once again, outstanding. Um, good evening to you all. Appreciate the fact that you're allowing us to give this presentation to you. I want you to know that a good twelve years or so ago, when I was, before I was elected official, I was a volunteer, assistant volunteer on the committee, the LCI Livable Centers Initiative. And phase one of that livable centers initiative was the development of our amphitheater, which of course, we had a grand opening and ribbon cutting in that amphitheater in September of twenty twenty-one. We're Glass Night and Patty LaBelle sold our concert. And on May third of this year, Saturday, May third, to start our fourth full season of our amphitheater. And of course, in August of twenty twenty-five this year, I will say to you, we're very proud of the fact that the amphitheater would be totally paid off at twenty-two point five million dollars. Done deal. All right? But that was phase one. Phase two, the LCI deals with the further development, everything on the, on the west side of East Atlanta. All right, over the railroad tracks in our downtown area. Like a lot of cities in uh, Georgia, around the country, you have a rail line that goes through the middle of your city. And when the, that's North Fort Southern, North Fort Southern. And so the rail. Horn, you will see the train. You cannot get rid of that, but we got, we're able to communicate with North Fort Southern and say, okay, fine. See, Stockbridge, we won't have our engineers on the, on the horn anymore. This is very helpful for us because this helps spur a good private, uh, public partnerships in our downtown area for us to grow. So we're up, we made that accomplished and did that. We also worked out a lease, worked out a lease agreement. We got to finalize the details with North Fort Southern. Also, some of the area in and around the rail tracks, the rail line tracks there, uh, we're going to lease that uh, from them. And then we're going to pave it and have additional paving of uh, parking space in the downtown area as well. As part of our success in this aspect, that's why we, we're going down this road. Also, what has occurred within the last year, the council has approved several different condos, townhomes, and apartments in the downtown area as well, in and around the downtown area. This is to spur more economic development and personal personnel to be living in the downtown area as we continue to grow our area. We want folks to be in, in, in the immediate area so they'll be able to communicate and uh, be present and have a livelihood of good active activities in downtown area as well. Thanks to the citizens for passing T-SLOSS as well, because we're going to utilize those T-SLOSS for several things to enhance our downtown area. Pathways between communities, connecting communities one another. Folks that are living in the downtown area through, through the recent uh, approval of building of condos and townhomes and some apartments, will have those pathways connecting to one another, connecting to the downtown area, so they can actively be involved in all the activities that we have in downtown. And they can traverse pretty safely on a spanned pathway, not just sidewalks, but pathway. Also, what has occurred with, with T-SLOSS is the fact we have plans to have a, a actual pedestrian bridge. This will connect east to the west side as we continue to have activities to have a theater and build up our downtown area as well. This pedestrian bridge is actually going to be north of the current bridge right now, which is in honor of Martin Luther King Senior. Okay, so it's going to be the north side of that, of there. It's going to of course be ADA accessible for that, so people can traverse with no problem, east to west side. It happens, breaks my heart sometimes when I see folks in downtown and they actually go walk across the railroad tracks, which is not very safe at all. So we want to work with that process. So we have funding for that through the T-SLOSS approval to, to have the pedestrian bridge to increase the connectivity in our downtown area as well. Let's see what else we need to talk about here. Um, our activities that we have, we have a lot of different activities in, in, around City Hall, Breeze Fest, a lot of activities that happen at the amphitheater parking lot when we're not having a particular concert. And this will bring folks in our downtown area, uh, once again as well. And matter of fact, I almost forgot, the STEM school, Henry County STEM school. Well, right, it's on the location, the location right there, the old form, uh, former Stockbridge High School. One of the things, there's several board members and employees of the, the school says fantastic that we got, we finally obtained the, the actual choir zone, because now, once the STEM school is established, the kids are going to school there. I believe it's August of twenty twenty-six when they're supposed to open up in this aspect. What happens is that the back part of that STEM school goes right, is right next to the railroad tracks. Well, they can study without that noise. We got the choir zone. They can study without that noise, the train, the engineers being on the horn. And once again, having a choir zone will help us spur the uh, our development of downtown, getting more businesses in our downtown area as well. And establishing some pedestrian um, living, living quarters in, in the immediate area. So we really asking for your support in, in this aspect, and I know it'll be a, a bigger presentation explaining everything to you. Uh, and this aspect, but we, we, um, this is what we need, your support in reference to continue to grow with this, this phase two, our vision of our growth uh, in the immediate area. I believe that is all that I need to say at this point, unless there are any further questions, um, I'll stand by for those. But thank you for listening and appreciate you. And I have to say this, Stockbridge is where the community connects. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, next up, um, Madam Chair will be Gary Mangian, um, who will be asking to share a screen so that he can provide you guys with the PowerPoint presentation.
Gary? Can everybody hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. Um, sent the presentation earlier. Uh, I don't know if you can bring it up on your end or let me share my screen. Uh, either way, how do you want to do it?
You can share your screen, Gary.
Uh, do you see, do you see it in front of you now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. Um, well, thank you for this opportunity, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, members of the commission. Certainly have a lot of business to, tonight, so I will try to be brief. Um, but the agenda item before you is to consent uh, to the City of Stockbridge TAD number one. So for the record, I just want to do a very quick presentation of how we got here, what the uh, intergovernmental agreement says, what your consent would mean. And an, and an estimate of what it means financially to the county moving forward. So just my quick background, back in uh, twenty twenty, that was voter referendum and residents of the county and the City of Stockbridge, and I presume some of the other cities uh, in the county, uh, granted their elected officials redevelopment powers under the Georgia Redevelopment Powers Law, uh, which enables uh, those local governments uh, to use tax increment financing uh, through tax allocation districts. Uh, Stockbridge has been, to my knowledge, the first community that exercises power. Uh, in twenty twenty-two, the city went through the process of creating a redevelopment plan, uh, adopting it, uh, establishing a tax allocation district, which was certified uh, by State Commissioner of Revenue in uh, at the end of uh, uh, twenty twenty-two. So again, just summarize the major elements of that plan, um, request your consideration for consent. And again, look at uh, what this, the county might contribute to the TAD and what it might receive in return, and then just respond to your questions. Uh, TADS in Georgia are quite common. Um, this is just a, a list of communities and counties that we know of that have established TADS within their jurisdictions. Uh, these TADS are primarily a tool exercised by cities and presented to their counties and school systems. But in red, you'll see, uh, there are at least five counties in Georgia that have adopted their own TADS uh, in unincorporated areas. Um, I suspect there will be more proposals to do TADS in Henry County in the future. Um, my guess is your strategic plan might address that issue, and maybe someday the county will also have its own tax allocation district in the unincorporated area. Um, there's a long process of establishing these. This is kind of, this graphic outlines the steps that have been done. The first six steps were entirely the purview of the city. As I mentioned, uh, the TAD was created at the end of twenty-two, certified uh, in early twenty twenty-three. And now we're at the uh, point of asking the county and school district to consent to the district. Uh, we made a presentation of the Board of Commission back in June of last year, as, you know, June of twenty twenty-three, uh, at which time the direction was with, that you would like to table the agreement until the city established its own millage rate and got further along in terms of um, planning the downtown redevelopment projects, securing a developer, et cetera. And they're at that point now where they're ready to proceed. But until we know what the terms of these intergovernmental agreements are, it's very difficult uh, to negotiate with developers and talk about the incentives the city might be able to provide until, until we know the terms of the county and the school district's consent. Uh, so that's why we're here uh, this evening. And, and just to refresh your memory, this is the tax allocation district. Um, it's basically downtown. There's City Hall and the amphitheater. It's basically to the east and west of that. Um, the major project that uh, the city has made progress on is, as the mayor mentioned, the downtown, basically the Town Center Project. I'll get into a little more detail on that in a minute. But when the TAD was certified, um, the tax digest was a little under thirty-six million, uh, which at that time was three percent, three point four percent of the city's digests. And uh, four, zero point four percent of the county uh, tax digest at the time. Uh, it's pretty heavily developed. It's over a million square feet of buildings. The characteristics of these buildings, commercial and residential, is that they're old and relatively low valued. Um, in fact, there was some evidence at the time that commercial property values along North Henry Boulevard and some of these side streets were actually declining in the years prior to the TAD being formed. Um, so that was the impetus for designing, you know, the district the way it is and, and the various projects within the district. Um, the key project within the district is the Town Center Project. Um, which the mayor alluded to, uh, it's potentially a three hundred million dollar mixed-use development, uh, utilizing some of the parking area with the amphitheater, some land around City Hall and the historic downtown core along the railroad tracks on both sides, mix of uh, new construction, adaptive reuse. Um, most of the parcels needed to implement this project are already under the city's control in their uh, Urban Development Authority. Uh, the head, city has a letter of intent with a developer uh, to execute the project. Um, we have a rough, rough estimate. It's going to take about thirty to forty million dollars in tax increment financing uh, and/or possibly other city, city funding to make the cost of this project economically feasible to undertake. Uh, so unless the county and the school district consent with uh, you know, this project is not financially feasible. Um, so we have drafted uh, uh, an intergovernmental agreement with the county, which I believe is, is before you, and you have seen the draft of that. Um, the, the basic terms of this agreement uh, are pretty simple. There's a lot of verbiage, but the, the main deal points are fairly simple. Uh, the county is requesting the tax allocation increment from the General Fund and the Recreation Millage. Uh, the County Water and Fire SSD Millage, uh, and as well as any millage from any future bond issues the county might issue over the life of the TAD are not part of this agreement, would not be um, impacted uh, by the existence of the TAD, other than um, those revenues would increase with the digests. Um, the first county TAD payment, if you choose to um, consent, would be due uh, in early twenty twenty-six from the tax bills issued later this year. So there'd be no impact on your current fiscal year budget. It would impact the budget next year. And just kind of a rough estimate of what that number might be, it's very likely to be less than twenty thousand dollars uh, in the next fiscal year. Uh, your only obligation is to. Your only obligation is to deliver your increment as well as the school department's increment, at least estimate what it is. The county would have no obligation to any agreements the city might reach with private developers. And the other significant part of this agreement is that it only, your consent as of this being signed only applies to the town center project, which I showed you in the previous slide. If the city decides three, four, or five years from now that there's another project within the TAD that merits a commitment of TAD funds, they have to come to the county for approval of that before they can make that commitment. So again, this is not a blank check, this is not an open-ended agreement to fund whatever project the city might want to do in the TAD. Any any future projects that the city makes a commitment of TAD funds to, it has to come back to you for consideration and approval. And then there are other pretty standard terms of the county's consent. There's a deadline if the city doesn't start construction on a project, I believe it's by the end of twenty twenty eight, that the county can pull its consent. There's a list of uses of county increment that are permitted, you know, that are allowed under the agreement and uses that are not. There is reporting procedures for the city to keep you informed of where they are in terms of progress, how much county money has been contributed to the TAD funds, how it's been sent, what the balance, unspent balances, et cetera. And then there's a procedure for returning any excess funds to the county at the end of the agreement. So the the intent is to protect, you know, the county's interests, your voters' interests, without hurting the city's ability to succeed. And if you consent to the agreement that's been drafted, we would then draft a similar kind of agreement to present to the Board of Education at the next step in the next couple of months. So what would this mean to Henry County? Well, the as of twenty twenty three, which is the last date I had, all those properties within the TAD paid about five hundred and fifty thousand dollars in total real estate taxes to the county. That was again, zero point four percent of the hundred and thirty five million in property taxes you collected countywide. Just kind of thinking about the future, if if this downtown project doesn't happen, you know, best case scenario is maybe values within the TAD would grow at about a three percent annual rate, real growth over the remaining life of the TAD, which is about twenty eight years. But if the city is successful in implementing this town center project, what you would get as a county would be the portion of the general fund and recreation taxes that are associated with the base value of the TAD, which is thirty five point nine million dollar digest. You'd get a hundred percent of the increase in the water and fire district taxes over the remaining life of the agreement. You'd get a hundred percent of county property taxes leveled on the value of commercial personal property, and of course, you would get a hundred percent of the county's share of any increased sales taxes that result from this development that might not otherwise occur. And those sales taxes, did some preliminary calculations months ago, the increase in sales taxes probably would exceed property taxes by a factor of nine to ten based on this plan. So so just kind of an estimate of what those comparative scenarios would be for the county treasury moving forward. This table, you may not be able to see the numbers very well, but I just basically did a forecast over the remaining twenty eight years of the TAD. This first column represents what would happen if you just, the status quo continued. In that case, the city would receive about twenty five point six million in total taxes, county taxes collected over the next twenty eight years from all the four, you know, pots and millage rates that you assess on row property. If this TAD is approved and the project successfully increment, implemented, that twenty six million grows to fifty six million. Of that fifty six million, about twenty six and a half million would be county increment contributed to the city of Stockbridge's TAD special fund. I mean, that's a big contribution. Over twenty six years, it averages, you know, it's a little under a million dollars a year, with most of it coming toward the back end of the agreement after the project is completed. However, because we're not including fire and water, the county would retain a little over thirty million in property taxes. So you would actually collect, while this intergovernmental agreement is in effect, about four and a half million dollars more if the city's successful and you're participating than if the status quo were just to continue indefinitely. So that's a seventeen and a half percent return on your property tax investment, not considering the value of commercial personal property, as well as any increased sales tax revenue and the county's share of those revenues. So I hope this is a powerful argument for you to consent and sign this agreement and be happy to take any questions if you have.
Thank, thank you, Gary. And in closing, Madam Chair and Commissioners, as you guys know, many of us have lived in the county for almost a quarter, almost twenty five plus years. And in that time, we've seen growth happen all around the interstate area and on the peripheral of the city, with little to no growth happening in the downtown. I think we're one of, we're the only one in the downtown area of Henry County cities that hold this distinction. And as I mentioned before, it's important for us to not fall into Einstein theory of insanity, where we do the same thing over and over again and expecting a different result, but to do something different and expect a different outcome. And that is that something different. And hoping that this will, with our developer on board, spare something different and be akin to what you see as I presented to our council members back in August at our retreat, showed them pictures of a few of our brother and sister cities in the northern metro area where directly across from their city halls were multi-story mixed-use buildings. That was Sugar Hill, Duluth, Smawney, Smyrna, Woodstock, Alpharetta. Those cities that have gone through a process of being able to allow for mixed-use development in their downtown and has spurred new life in their downtown area, and that is the ultimate goal, to provide that live, work, play area in the downtown area in Stockbridge, to see her flourish and grow and to have everybody prosper. I will tell you that, you know, I came in on the tail end of the Camp Creek Marketplace TAD along Camp Creek Parkway and East Point, when I was city manager there. And most folks don't know that that TAD actually was the highest performing TAD in the state of Georgia, outperforming Atlantic Station. Right? It paid off its thirty-year bonds. About a year or two ago, we were able to refinance and pay those bonds off, and those monies now respectively go to the county and the school board that participated back then and back in two thousand. So, you know, the same hope is here. As we know, our residents are being underserved. You just could see it at the sprouts and all the new businesses that comes up. You see how folks are gravitating to those, because we've been going elsewhere to have those same things, and now we are getting those things here. So we hope that you guys support the TAD. And we will be presenting this to our school board in the very near future. I've reached out to the school superintendent, I've talked to the school board, the former superintendent, as well as the current superintendent, who's very familiar with TADS coming out of South Florida, to get their agreement as well. So we'll be reaching out to them next month and in March to get their buy-in on the TAD as well. So thank you so much for your patience through this process, as you know, we've been going through this for about two years, and sometimes it takes that long. And so I appreciate all that the staff, Sheri and her staff have done. The chair and the commissioners are asking questions and us getting those answers to you guys over these period of time. And so we welcome any feedback you may have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for the presentation. And I guess now what I'll do is just go and see if the commissioners have any questions. I'll start with. We'll go backwards. I'll start with Commissioner Lewis.
Hey, good afternoon. Hey, thank you very much for the presentation. As I know, I've mentioned to Mayor Ford and to the city manager Fred as well. Just been waiting for you all to come back. So I won't speak for everybody else on the on the board, but I'm in full support of what you all are trying to do in the city of Stockbridge. But what happens is good in Stockbridge is actually beneficial for all of Henry County. So definitely support what you all are trying to do. I think it's a very viable plan for you all and for us, and that's all I have. I don't have any further questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Appreciate that.
Commissioner Price.
I have a couple of questions, one of which has already been answered. I was just concerned about what impact this would have on our special service districts, and I see that the fire and water will not be included, and so I'm cool on that. But as I was reading the document, I was reading about eminent domain, and my question is, how many properties that's in this tax allocation district that could potentially be affected by eminent domain, or have you already spoken to the property owners within this development? And are they kind of cool with it and looking forward to the development? Because I'm just concerned, you know, that there may be properties that people may lose if whatever they have currently is not a part of the the big plan or the big picture.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Price. None, zero. The city has no intent on using eminent domain for this TAD. I think, as it was alluded, the majority of the properties in this TAD that you see the future development on are city-owned properties. The city has no, no no wish, no desire. And I said it again, the city will not, and has no wish or desire to use eminent domain as part of the tax allocation district.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Commissioner Angler. Commissioner Angler.
No, no questions.
Okay, all right, thank you. Commissioner Robinson.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I do like how you did say with the eminent domain, is that something that we can actually put in writing for you on the city manager on that aspect? Okay, so we want to make sure that that is in writing. And also, I do like how it stated that if you all wanted to go outside of the particular area, you had to come back to the county to receive approval. Because I know when I served on the city, I do know the downtown area, all of this was what was to be, you know, impacted by the TAD, which is a good thing. It will help all of Henry County, because even just like with Stockbridge, they have the amphitheater and it has been a success, and it brings a lot of people to Henry County. And when we're talking about tourism, people look for that. So I'm very excited about this. And knowing now that the county still has the opportunity to be able to have buy-in is the key. So that way, we continue to be the lead, you know, basically, you know, partner with this, but also the lead, because you would have to come circle back to the county. So I do like this as well. So thank you for that. And that's all the questions I have, Madam Chair.
If I may just add quickly, the issue of eminent domain. The only reason it's in there is the definition of what eminent domain means. And the bottom of that paragraph defining eminent domain says, "The city may undertake and carry out community redevelopment, but shall not include the acquisition of property acquired by eminent domain to private enterprise for private uses." So basically, the only reason the words in there is in the document to say that the city isn't going to use it. Just to clarify.
Thank you. I appreciate that. That's that's great clarification. Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am. And I will also, as I relate this, I think Gary showed the the plan. This is, this TAD is specifically what we're asking for is for that town center area, which is the area directly across from City Hall, properties that are city-owned, city-owned properties on the amphitheater property itself and the downtown area where we own properties already.
So I have another question then. So as it is being developed and it is expanding, is it a potential then for some of those areas as it is expanding in the development to be subject to eminent domain?
No, sir. Once again, the city will not utilize eminent domain to take private property for this project in no way, shape, or form. You know, that, I know that because some people will see it, and I just, that's why I'm reiterating it the way I am, is because, you know, the majority of the properties that you see and the plan that you see in front of you, those loud yellow colors, the majority of those properties are owned by the city of Stockbridge. And in this plan, there are only three properties that the city doesn't own, and those landowners are in conversations with the development partner that we have on board for them to purchase those properties from those landowners, but the city will not use eminent domain for those purposes. And the TAD is, this TAD for the town center is specifically for what you see in that area there. If you're familiar with what happened around the Camp Creek and Atlantic Station TAD, development happened on its own generically, based on what happened in those areas. They weren't spurred by the TAD, by the TAD, but by the fact that the TAD incentivized new development, that those other developments took off in the adjacent area, and which became beneficial because those monies went to the cities and the counties and the school board. And so that's our view of it, but no, we're not utilizing eminent domain to take any private property.
And I was just concerned because I know when City Hall was built, some issues, you know, arose with that. So I just wanted to make sure, you know, that those owners were protected.
Very aware, very aware of that situation when that happened in oh, six, oh, nine, yes. And, you know, that changed the state law, that as well as Tequila versus Connecticut that went before the Supreme Court the same year where the Supreme Court said that local government could use eminent domain for economic development purposes. Well, that very same year, the Georgia Assembly put in place a restriction that says that local governments could not use eminent domain for the purposes of economic development. So that restrict that from local governments. Now, it didn't include Georgia power, or it didn't include the state or housing authorities, but it did include cities and counties. So there's a barrier of state law in place.
Commissioner Price, I'm sorry, we will honor what the vice chair wanted us to do is put it in writing, so we'll do that for you as well.
It's in there. It's already in there. That's the portion that Gary showed. That language is already.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Okay, I would like to give Commissioner Wilson an opportunity. Everybody else has had an opportunity. Let's give Commissioner Wilson an opportunity to speak.
All right, thank you, Chair. Sheri, I'd like for you to weigh in and tell me your thoughts on how this TAD has been presented and how it's going to affect the county's tax digest. And just give me your thoughts, please.
So thank you, Commissioner. This is certainly something in this format that the county manager's office in consultation with our finance department can support. I do believe early on, we were concerned about those special service districts being included. The city did hear our concerns, and that has been removed. So all of the public safety pieces of the special service district will not be impacted by it. I think what was a seller for the county is right now what we're receiving in tax revenue versus what we could receive if we allow the city to really go through the redevelopment of this site, and it's a benefit for all of us. And so this is certainly something that my office, the C F And so um, this is certainly something that my office, um, the CFO and um, our team can certainly support.
Okay, alright, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, I think Vice Chair Robinson had her hand up for um, a comment or question.
Yes, I just have one last comment. Um, as you know, being familiar with the project, um, like I said, um, being with the city from twenty sixteen to twenty nineteen, this has been a long process. This is nothing that just came up. Um, and during that process, for those constituents that are watching, um, there were um, meetings, town hall meetings, several meetings, community meetings, bringing in the community to have buy-in, um, their concerns and questions were answers answered to make those corrections, just as the Stockbridge has done for the county. Um, because that's why it has been a long process, that the county needed things to be done. So thank you, County Manager, for making your comment. Um, so that way it ties in that this is something that's not been going on for just one year or two years. It's been several years. Um, and also it had community buy-in. So just wanted to say that by having my experience um, with this project.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, so I, I do have a question. Um, with regards to the special service districts. Uh, Sherry, I saw fire up there. Uh, what, what other special service districts other than fire? Um, with PD or I didn't see?
So, Madam Chair, the only districts that will be included um, in the TAD will be our general fund and county recreation.
Okay, because Stockbridge has their own police department. It doesn't impact us uh, in the special service districts for our uh, PD. It would just be fire. Uh, and, and the water authority, correct?
That is correct. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, um, okay, that was, that was it. I, that's why I just wanted to make a clarification on.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Alright, well, um, then I guess what we need to do is, um, County Manager, we call for, or Stephanie, we need a motion to approve the IGA. Is that what we are here for tonight?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, alright then. So, um, I have, um, I guess a motion to approve.
A motion to approve the TAD um, in a government agreement with the city of Stockbridge.
So I got a motion uh, from Vice Chair Robinson, a sec- a second from Commissioner uh, Lewis. Uh, if there's no further discussion, uh, all in favor. Okay, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, Sherry. Uh, thank you, Kevin and the staff for all the work you guys have put in to get us to this point. Much appreciation. Thanks.
Same here. Thanks.
So now, now do we move into executive session?
You had one other item, the appointment for the county attorney. Did you want to do that after executive session?
Uh, yeah, uh, we'll do, uh, well, yeah, we'll do that at, well, yeah, yeah, we'll do that after executive session.
Okay, very good.
So we are dismissed.
Yes, so all of the staff and all of the members are dismissed.
So, so do I need to get a motion to go into executive session first? So can I get a motion to go into executive session? Got a motion, got a second from uh, got a motion from the Vice Chair, second from Commissioner Anglin, all in favor. Okay, uh, and, and uh, we will retire after executive session. Thank you.
Thank you. Communication saved a few. Thank you. Very good.
And I think we're still waiting for some commissioners to join.
Price and Angler, yeah, and Lewis, all of us, so.
Okay, let me get the right mo- oh, you know what, I'm putting y'all back intogether most, I apologize, okay. Okay, we are live, Chair, you were good to go.
Okay, all right, good, I'd like to, um, uh, call for a motion to re- reconvene from executive session.
Most move to reconvene.
Okay, all right, can I get a second? Got a second from Commissioner Anglin, all in favor? Okay, uh, motion carries. Uh, I need to get a motion to approve, uh, the affidavit and resolution pertaining to executive session.
I move to approve.
They got a motion from Commissioner Lewis, a second from Commissioner Anglin, all in favor? Okay. Motion carries, can you not hear Commissioner Price? Commissioner Price? Commissioner Price, can you hear? Okay, all right. Um. We voted to reconvene from executive session and to approve the affidavit pertaining to the resolution. And you didn't, uh, you didn't raise your hand, I just wanted to make sure that you were in support of that. Okay, all right, great. Uh, next item on the agenda is, uh, the appointment of the, uh, county attorney. Um. The, um. County attorney will be the, uh, will be Greg Heck. And the litigation attorney will be. Our, our deputy attorney will be, um. Uh, Tim Buckley, that will handle our lit- litigation. Um, Sherri, did you want to give the update?
Thank you Chair, I'm gonna start, uh. Providing some information in reference to the ongoing weather event that we're seeing here in Henry County. Uh, as of right now, government offices are going to be closed tomorrow. We will have staff virtual, if you call needing assistance from any department, it. Staff will answer, and we'll do everything we can from a virtual environment to assist you. Uh. Temperatures are gonna continue to drop and be in the teens overnight, uh, and into the early morning. We aren't expecting to get above freezing until late tomorrow, and with the wind chills on the roads, uh, we're expecting some ice to accumulate there. We will continue to monitor those impacts and provide updates on the county website and social media pages. Currently, the emergency operations center is fully activated in response to the winter weather. Operations begin at 6:00 AM this morning, they're running 12-hour operational periods, uh, but work has. Been undergone for several days now, DOT crews have been treating our roadways, trying to prepare and mitigate. The snow and ice event, and we currently have five crews out now actively mitigating the development of the snow accumulation and the ice on the roadways. Senior centers, parks and rec facilities and transit are closed tomorrow. We also want to inform the public about a warming center that is still open at Locust Grove Rec Center. The address for that is 10 Cleveland Street, it's open 24 hours through the duration of this weather event. Anyone needing assistance can call 770-288-7506, 770-288-7506. And to reach the community resource team. All of this information can be found on the Henry County Government page, you can check our website, you can check our social media. And if you've signed up for code red or notification system, you can get information from that as well. We are urging citizens, please, please, please stay at home, avoid traveling, uh, we want to keep you at home and safe. Also, make sure your home is taken care of. Uh, we have a history of pipes bursting in these low temperatures for this duration. Make sure that you're dripping your sinks, make sure that you open those cabinets up, so that that heat that you're already paying for can warm up those pipes. If you have a situation where your pipes are frozen and busted, you can call 911, and we'll send responders out to assist in that situation. At any time, of course, if you do have an emergency, please call 911. And stay up to date with weather information on all county outlets, websites, social media, uh, and please be safe, Henry County.
Okay, uh, I would like to, I know that we have, um, Sherri, is Sherri there?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, um, I know that we have, um. Greg Heck, Kirby Glaze, and Rachel Mack on, if they could turn their cameras on and say hello?
Good e- good evening, Greg Heck, uh, Heck Walker Jordan. Uh, I know Rachel Mack and Kirby Glaze are here and. Y- you may, uh, just suggestion, it may be the appointment of, uh. Heck Walker Jordan PC is the, as the attorney, because I. My presumption is Rachel Mack's gonna be in. In staff attorney offices, uh, during the week, a fair amount.
Is Kirby on?
I am.
Okay.
Madam Chair. I'm here, I'd like to, uh, uh, say hello to the commissioners and, and tell each and every one of you, along with the, uh. County manager, assistant county manager, and the rest of the staff that. We look forward to the opportunity to work with you.
Okay, and Ms. Rachel Mack?
I'd just like to say good evening to everyone, Madam Chairwoman, Vice Madam Chairwoman, and the other commissioners and the county, county, um, manager. Um, I'm, I'm looking so forward to working with everyone and progressing Henry County for it, thank you.
And Madam Chairwoman and Commissioners and. County Manager, Deputy County Manager, all, the whole team, we want to say we appreciate it. We plan to work very, very hard for you, and we appreciate the opportunity to be a part of the team and have great admiration for your work and service, thank you.
Okay, thank you. With that being said, uh, County Manager, did you have any, uh, uh, other comments other than the weather?
No ma'am, that's it.
Okay, all right, well, meeting is a giant, and everyone have a sa- um. Um, a great rest of your evening, and please be safe and stay at home. Thank you.
Thank you, y'all have a good night.